Good afternoon, everyone. Today is February 20, 2024, and this is the Salinas City Council meeting. This meeting is available in Spanish for members of the public in attendance and on Zoom. Translation devices can be obtained in the foyer. City clerk?
Buenas tardes. Esta reunión está disponible en español para los miembros del público y en Zoom. Las unidades de traducción se pueden obtener en la entrada de la rotunda.
Thank you. And Zoom information can be obtained on our website. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember McShane, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to all the courageous citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as our own.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barrera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember McShane.
Here.
Councilmember Osornio.
Here.
Councilmember Rocha.
Here.
Councilmember Rocha.
I said here, sorry.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandoval.
Here.
Mayor Craig.
Here.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right, we have a couple of announcements. Our presentation item 24-091, the Monterey Salinas Transit Oriented Development Planning, has been continued to March 5, 2024. We are moving a few items around on the agenda, and we are moving closed session. Agenda item 24-090, the Public Employee Appointment, California Government Code Section The city manager will be held at the beginning of the meeting. So I'm going to go ahead and take public comment only on the closed session item, which is, to be clear, the public employee appointment of the city manager. So if anyone from the public wishes to comment on that item, we'll take it now. Thank you.
Name is Eric Peterson, and you probably all know what I'm going to say. But just in case, you've got the best candidate we'll ever get, right up there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment on the city manager appointment? Hi, welcome.
Good evening. Real quick, I'm just going to concur with Mr. Peterson. The best ones here. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other public comments, we'll go to Zoom. Any member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on this item? If so, please use the raise hand function. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. We're going to temporarily adjourn to closed session.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may, I think there's some folks that just came to give a public comment on an event or something, just for that. Could we just take them real quick?
So respectfully, I'm going to follow the order of operations and take this item only. Thank you, I appreciate it. Normally, I'm pretty accommodating, I think you would agree, but I want to ensure that it's a clean process. We'll go ahead and adjourn to closed session. If all of you want to stay in outside of the rain, we certainly understand, and you're welcome to do so. We'll be back shortly. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you very much for your patience. I see we have a full house. Today is Tuesday, February 20, 2024. We are back in session regarding closed session item 54957B1, city manager appointment. The council has decided to take, excuse me, the council has decided to move forward with a preferred candidate for the city manager position. No contract has been reached or drafted at this point. Thank you. We'll move forward. Onto our proclamations. We have National Black History Month, and we have Councilmember Rocha.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to read this proclamation. National Black History Month, February 20, 24. Whereas February is designated as National Black History Month, and whereas Black History Month recognizes the contributions of African-Americans to U.S. history and are essential to the ongoing story of America, and whereas in 1976, the week-long event officially became Black History Month when U.S. President Gerald Ford extended the recognition to, quote, "honor the two often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history." And Black History Month has been celebrated in the United States every February since. And whereas Black History Month also celebrates the achievements and contributions that African-Americans have made in our community in various manners, such as through the arts, and whereas African-American artists have used art to preserve history and community memory as well as for empowerment. And whereas the city of Salinas recognizes African-Americans' contributions to visual and performing arts, literature, folklore, language, music, film, and every other forms of cultural expression in which their influence has been paramount. Now therefore, I, Mayor Kimberly Craig, on behalf of the Salinas City Council hereby proclaim the month of February 20, 24, as National Black History Month throughout the city of Salinas, and call upon our community to observe this year's theme, African-Americans and the Arts.
And do we have someone here to receive the proclamation?
We do not, but Councilmember Sandoval and myself are going to extend an invitation to you and the entire council, as we are going to have a special small event here in the rotunda to honor the Salinas Juneteenth Association.
Excellent, thank you, appreciate it. All right, we'll go on to the next item, Engineers Week, February 18 through 24. And I think we have Adriana Robles, our city engineer, here in the audience. Councilmember Barrera.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'm going to ask all the engineering department to please, look at all these smart people. Madam Mayor, before I read this proclamation, I would like to acknowledge, you know, all the engineers for the city of Salinas, we want to thank you. You have a difficult task in our city. A lot of times, you're involved when there's emergencies, when there's, you're dealing in things that unless you're hands-on and you're taking care of business, we're all happy, but sometimes, when things go wrong, we want to thank you for that, for just moving forward with all the things that you do for this great city. So I'm going to read this on behalf of all of you. Whereas engineers use their scientific and technical knowledge and skills in creative and innovative ways to fulfill society's needs, whereas you engineers face the major challenges of our communities, from designing and construction resilient infrastructure, systems cleaning our environment, assuring safe and efficient buildings, to designing information systems that allow us to communicate with each other effectively. The city of Salinas employs engineers from diverse backgrounds in knowledge in civil engineering, mechanical engineering, structural engineering, chemical engineering, and one of my favorites, computer science, which I don't know anything about. Whereas it was founded in 1951, National Engineers Week is dedicated to ensuring a diverse and well-educated future engineering workforce by increasing understanding of an interest in engineering and technology careers. Engineers encourage our young math and science students to realize the practical power of their knowledge to better their community and become the engineers of the future. And by looking, there's a lot of you that are very young, and I want to thank you for that. You're already our future. On behalf of Mayor Kimberly Craig and on behalf of the city council, we hereby recognize you, and we proclaim February 18 through February 24, 2024, to you, all you engineers, as National Engineers Week, and we urge all residents to join me in recognizing the important contributions these engineers make to our city lives. Thank you very much.
Adriana, if you'd like to say a few words on behalf of the team, and then because we have such a large group, I know we have Sophie here, we'll have everyone come forward along the bottom line and take a group photo after that, so go ahead.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. With President's Day in mind, I'd like to share a quote from President Hoover when he spoke of engineering. "It is a great profession. There is the fascination of watching a figment of the imagination emerge through the aid of science to a plan on paper. Then it moves to realization in stone, or metal, or energy. Then it brings jobs and homes to men. Then it elevates the standard of living and adds to the comforts of life." That is the engineer's high privilege. It is our privilege as engineers to dream, to study, analyze, calculate, create, and build for everybody's benefit. As we look to the future, I encourage any student out there who might be interested in a future in engineering, who might have any kind of inclination in math or science, to reach out to me, to reach out to any of the staff here. We can serve as guidance. And lastly, I would like to thank my fellow staff members, Ganda, Lucy, Christina, Sophia, Alexis, Pavana, Angeline, who gave up their holiday to create these awesome shirts that were all worn.
Thank you, Adriana, and thank you to the entire team for all that you do for our wonderful community. We certainly recognize engineering is a critical element to city planning and implementation of many, many projects, so thank you. If you wouldn't mind coming forward, and we'll have Sophie take a photo. Council will stay up on the stage here, but we'll have everyone try to scoot in as close as you can, because I'm not sure how wide the angle is on that camera. Thank you. No, actually, I can get a Pavana picture. Okay, ready? One, two. Okay. All right, next up, I'm wondering, do we have Frank Yacine in the audience?
All right, Frank?
There he is. Frank, if you wouldn't mind coming forward to the podium. I want to take a brief moment. I met Frank many years ago, at this point, when I was out talking to people in East Salinas. And I wanted to just acknowledge, when I found out what Frank had done in this community, I think it's worthy of a city of champion recognition. Frank, as we come upon the two-year anniversary of the death of J.D. Alvarado, some of you may or may not know, that actual instance occurred in front of Frank's place of business, Frank's Auto Sales. And so his leadership as a community member and willingness to help out Salinas Police Department at that time, I think deserves to be recognized. We are constantly asking the community to help our police department solve crimes, to be involved. If you see something, say something. And so I wanted to take a moment just to publicly acknowledge the leadership and the work of Frank Yacine. Whereas Frank Yacine has been a lifelong resident of Salinas and graduate of Salinas High School, whereas Frank Yacine has contributed to the overall economic vitality of the city for over 30 years as a local owner of Frank's Auto Sales and other commercial businesses throughout the city, including Central Coast Auto Sales, El Poyo Loco, Las Palmas Furniture, and more. Whereas Frank Yacine is a dedicated member of this community, was instrumental in assisting the Salinas Police Department to aid in Officer Jorge J.D. Alvarado's homicide. And whereas, at midnight on February 25, 2022, following contact by the Salinas Police Department, Frank Yacine, without hesitation, drove down to his business and provided security footage of the incident to detectives, resulting in critical video evidence that helped solve Officer Jorge J.D. Alvarado's murder. And whereas Frank Yacine's action and service are an example of the dedicated members of Salinas willing to help and support our local law enforcement agencies through their actions, which impact the quality of life and safety of everyone. Now therefore, I, Mayor Kimberly Craig, on behalf of the Salinas City Council, do hereby commend Frank Yacine on his service and dedication to the Salinas community. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll give you a quick moment to say a couple of words, if you don't mind.
I want to thank the mayor, city council members, for this reward, and I want to thank the Salinas Police Department for the good job they're doing. As a business owner, I feel safe in Salinas, and they're doing a great job. I know they have, it's a rough job, but they're doing a very good job, and the whole community is happy with the Salinas Police Department, the way they're doing their job, and we really appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and to address the item that I think most of you have been waiting for, we have the Salinas Police Officers Medal of Valor recipients and Award of Merit. We have Councilmember Sandoval to give that.
Thank you, and I'm going to invite Chief Murray up to share a couple of words, and maybe you can help me hand out the proclamations once we get to that point, and I'll read off the names. You know, I had a recent meeting with Chief Murray, and he shared with me some of the stories of the Sun Street incident, and frankly, I didn't know what had happened. You know, I heard that many officers off-duty rushed to the aid of their fellow officers, you know, didn't have to do that, but with their dedication and amazing valor and bravery, that's what they did. So I think all too often, the city doesn't realize the passion and love for the work that you do, that you have for your job. So it's my honor to read some of these proclamations in honor of our officers. And I'll invite, before I get started, I'll invite Chief Murray to say a few words.
Sure, on behalf of the Salinas Police Department, I'm grateful to the council, Mayor, thank you. I want to certainly acknowledge the Monterey County Sheriff's Department, our brothers and sisters, the deputies who responded first to the scene. It was, of course, Deputy Grant, who was critically injured. Their deputies responded and rescued him from the front of the door where he had just been shot. Our officers responded and then assisted with the further rescue. What I want to point out is exactly what you said, Councilman Sandoval. Many of our officers responded from home, some were on vacation, some were at a local restaurant when they saw the police units flying by, they returned to work and they self-deployed. They then stayed on scene for over nine hours of sustained gunfire from the suspect. He shot at them through walls, he shot down five drones, all of these officers, some of whom were pinned down by the gunfire during their attempts to evacuate the surrounding residents. I also want to recognize, not only did we evacuate community members, community members assisted us by providing information about the suspect and where other people were located in that complex that needed to be evacuated. I just want to stress that it's that type of cooperation, that type of shared responsibility that results in a good outcome such as this. So I hope we can call the officers up, and I'll leave it to you, sir.
Yeah, Mayor, if it's okay, maybe the council would like to stand up in the front, and then Chief can hand out the awards as I read off the names, is that okay?
Fine.
Yeah. Would you join me up here?
Certainly.
I'll start off with reading the first proclamation, and then we'll name the officers, if you guys want to join them up in the front.
Okay.
I'm not sure, however you'd like.
Say, like, they can come up and shake hands, and we can do a drive-through?
Yeah, come on, join us, Chief Murray. Sure, sure. So we had several Medal of Valor recipients, it states, whereas on May 31, 2023, Monterey County Sheriff's Deputy Jesse Grant was serving an eviction order at an apartment on 29 Sun Street in the city of Salinas. And whereas during the encounter, Deputy Grant was shot by the resident of the apartment, Aaron Howard Fisher, and the Salinas Police Officers assisted with the rescue of Deputy Grant while under fire. Whereas numerous Salinas Police Officers, as well as other local and federal agencies, responded. During this time, the suspect barricaded himself and continued shooting at the responding officer from the upstairs apartment, causing a threat to the community in the surrounding areas. Officers and other responding agencies, whereas throughout the nine-hour standoff, the suspect continued shooting at police and shot down several drones, and whereas it was later discovered that the suspect was armed with a total of three semi-automatic rifles, two bolt-action rifles, two handguns, and at the time of the incident, was wearing camouflage military apparel with several loaded magazines, a ballistic helmet, a gas mask, and was holding an AK-47 assault rifle. And whereas the swift and rapid response of officers played a crucial role in mitigating potential harm to our community and officers. And whereas officers demonstrated an exceptional courage in the face of adversity, and their brave actions are reflective of the highest traditions and values of the Salinas Police Department. Now therefore, I, Mayor Kimberly Craig, on behalf of the Salinas City Council, hereby recognize Cameron Murphy as a Medal of Valor recipient, and thank him for his service and dedication to the Salinas community.
And Councilmember, I think probably the most efficient way to do this is just to name names, and we can give each one a round of applause, but I think that's probably the most concise but meaningful way.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Also, recipients Medal of Honor, Alex Magaña.
Hold those, and then you can hand them.
Ivan Urquiso. Sure, you can help me with that, Chief. Cameron Murphy. Chris Valero. Chris? Robert Miller. David Prytt. There you go. You just have to throw it out. He's not here.
Get a system down.
We're going to get you guys, we'll get it, go on. Alex Jimenez. Jeff Muñoz. Alex Rodriguez. Chris? Oh, you did Chris already, Valero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, long time no see. Thank you very much. We already did Alex, yes.
We're getting a system, just a second. Rudy Román. Austin Skaggs. Ivan Urquiso.
Okay, thank you, good sir.
All right, and for Award of Merit, we have Ruben Sanchez. John McNeil. Justin Heckman. Byron Ganson. Stephen Craig. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Brian McNeely. McKinley. Ermelinda Reyes. There she is. Edwin Cruz. Luis Toribio. Scott Sutton. Alejandro Zamora. Thank you.
Yes, Scott, thank you. Good work.
Mario Reyes.
Thank you. Good work.
Pete Gomez. John Richardson. Ciro Barbosa. Joseph Kinley. Gabe Gonzalez. Evan Adams. Christopher Neff. Isidro Medrano. Nicholas Reyes. Ian Kyle. Perardo Magaña. Cameron Mitchell. Steven Sparks. Luis Dorantes. Kurt Hahn. Joseph Santiago. Christopher Avila. Eric Rodriguez.
Good work, thank you. Thank you. She's got you. Thank you, Chris, good work.
Nathaniel Castillo. Andres Torres. Jared Reyes. Christopher Webb. Francisco De León. Devin Castaneda. Robert Zuniga. Devin Castaneda. James Godwin. Cassandra Schmidt.
Gotta send it out.
Edgar Garcia. Robert Miller. Austin Skaggs. One is for valor and one is for merit, so. Robert Valero. Jonathan. This is a tough one. Tulis Sega, thank you. Jonathan Juárez. And Alex Magaña. This is great because now we'll know our officer's names, so you can make sure you greet them when you see them, Salinas.
I will just take a moment to acknowledge, obviously, there were a lot of names on there, which goes to show you the significant response of the event, so just want to say thank you. Thank you to the entire force. Thank you to the guys and girls that came off-duty, running towards danger at a time when they could have been home with their families but understood the big, big problem that we had in Salinas that day. Grateful that our officers came away safely and very much appreciate your dedication to the citizens of Salinas. Thank you.
Can we light them up for holding there? Come join us.
Two rows?
Yeah, two rows, three rows, whatever.
Either come and friend or make another run.
Alex Magaña, we still have one outstanding for you, so he just walked out. If we could grab Alex Magaña. Thank you. Medal of Valor and Medal of Merit recipient, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much for your patience. As we go through our items on the agenda today, we're gonna go ahead and go on to public comment. If you wish to make a general public comment or comment on a specific agenda item, you're encouraged to attend the city council meeting in person or attend the Zoom webinar and use the raise hand icon. Emailed public comments received have been distributed to the mayor, the council, the city clerk, and will be entered into the permanent record. Public comments generally are limited to two minutes per speaker. I may further limit the time for public comments depending on the agenda schedule. We are now open for public comment on items that are not on today's agenda but are in the city of Salinas's subject matter jurisdiction. Comments on agenda items should be held until the items are reached. We are now open for public comment. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Pastor Todd Anderson. I'm from Compass Church. Nice to meet all of you. I work with the faith community in our city and have held some pastors' breakfasts and most recently, we hosted the mayor's prayer breakfast. Thanks to some conversations with various community leaders, I have been called upon to help organize a community Fourth of July fireworks show at the Rodeo Grounds with the Rodeo Committee. We have their support and I'm here for two reasons today. Number one, I would like your support for this event as well. We continue to have a substantial issue with illegal fireworks in our city, and I'm convinced that a free, family-friendly event would help to alleviate that, and I would love your support and hope you all could be there. I have a letter that I distributed to you earlier asking for your sponsorship. Just like some of the other major community events in Salinas that the city does support, I think that this event meets the criteria to support sponsorship. I know Mr. Sandoval has been working to develop some specific criteria and I applaud him for that effort. Given that the criteria may not be in place by the time you approve the budget, I'm hoping that for some level of reasonable sponsorship to put into this community event and that you would all consider that. Lastly, I want to say I love our city and I appreciate all the work that each and every one of you do. I believe the Rodeo Grounds are in Councilmember Osornio's district, and I believe that, sir, you and many others, have been wanting to bring back a Fourth of July event. Compass Church is aware of that desire and we have stepped up to join with you, so I look forward to following up with you at a later date. But thank you. And lastly, I'll say, cities don't just grow, we build them.
Excellent, thank you. Have to say, that was remarkable time for a pastor and public comment, so thank you. With that, welcome.
Good afternoon, councilmembers, Madam Mayor. Wanted to come and remind our city council this urgent issue of rent control, of stabilization, protection for our renters, of which make up 53% of this city, need the support from our city, from our city council, from our community in general. We, in this effort of collecting petition, collecting sign-offs, information from residents, we have encountered some stories. We continue to encounter story after story after story that demonstrates the resilience, the measures, the means of which our families, families, our Salinas families, are taking in order for their, in order for their children to survive. And it's, it's, conditions that end up separating families and conditions that end up compromising, compromising the well-being of the rest of our city. So, I wanted to, I want to just say thank you for allowing, for allowing for this opportunity, and I want to, want to pass it on to, actually, I will stop here and I'm gonna let the compañera speak more on our effort.
Hi, welcome.
Hola, buenas tardes, miembro de concilio. Mi nombre es Francisca Vázquez. Yo soy, yo vivo este Distrito Cinco. Estamos aquí para recordarle que, este, que tome en cuenta todo lo que está pasando para que, que tome, eso es lo que estamos haciendo aquí. Y para nosotros es muy difícil estar aquí porque como ahorita ves que estaba lloviendo y todo, pero hacemos todo lo posible para estar aquí. Que tome un cuenta de control de renta porque la verdad estamos empatante en escuchar la comunidad durante día que estuvimos saliendo afuera, hablar con la comunidad y des, escuchamos de muchas cosas para que haya un control de renta, es muy emergencia para nosotros porque la verdad es muy impactante para nosotros y muchas gracias para permitir que estamos aquí a hablar con ustedes pero que tome en cuenta sobre de control de renta, que haya un control, por favor. Y aquí estamos para entregarle este petición, lo que hicimos, son 700, la que voy a entregar.
Hello, good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Fran, I'm sorry?
We need to, okay, I just want to make sure that we restart the clock, thank you. Go ahead.
All right. Yeah. Hello, good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Francisca Vázquez and I'm from District Five, and I'm here to remind you to please consider everything that has happened. It has been very hard. We need you to consider rent control. It is hard for us to come here, it's raining, but rent control is something important, and we have been talking with the community, hearing their stories, and it's really impactful to hear everything that is going on. Rent control is becoming an emergency. We really need you to consider it. Thank you for letting us come here and talk to you about it. And I have 700 petitions here that I am going to give to the city clerk.
Excellent.
Francisca would like to deliver this message in her language.
Okay, just to be, just to be clear, we give each person an opportunity to speak one time at, at the podium, so. She had 40 seconds left on her clock, so if she wants to speak for 40 seconds, I'll allow that. Thank you. All right. Hi, welcome.
Hi, Olga Reyna, District Four. I'm here to, hello, city council, thank you for having us here. We're here to let you know that housing is a human right and people are suffering because of the high rents. You cannot pay a high rent like $3,000, $4,000, that's what people are having to pay right now. So, rent control is a must right now, and so I'm asking you to consider it as soon as possible, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Consuelo Rosales. Yo la también les vengo a pedir que tengan un poquito de, pues, de humanidad, ¿verdad? Creo que todos tenemos derecho a un, a una casa digna. Yo pago cuatro mil quinientos dólares de renta y creo que si hubiera un programa donde nos dieran la oportunidad a comprar una casa, ¿verdad? Porque creo que el tener una casa es digna para nuestra familia. No podemos estar viviendo en una sola casa, tres, cuatro familias, porque sola no puedo pagarlo. Gracias.
Hello, my name is Consuelo Rosales and I'm here to ask you to please be human. Housing, it's, it's a right. It's a right for everyone. I have to pay $4,500 in rent for my home. I am hoping we can have a program, an option, so we can buy our own home. Having a home, having a decent home is a right, and three or four people, families have to live in the, in my home because I can't afford to pay it on my, by myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Mary Morsoli and I'm from District Four, that's where I live. And I just want to ask and kind of plead to reconsider all these things that are happening in Salinas, especially the high rent. And I also want to invite you to go out with us and see the community and ask them about the rent and how they're dealing with it, because it's important, because if you do go out there, you're gonna feel the pain of the, of all the persons that are out there suffering. So I would like to invite you to go at least one day with us and try to get, to know the people and their concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es María Chávez. Este, vivo en el Distrito Cuatro. Me uní a la Escuelita porque mi familia fue perjudicada también por lo incremento de renta. Entonces anduve juntando firmas y hubo muchas familias que están más peor que la de nosotros. Ya que la de nosotros, nuestros dos hijos más grandes, este, ya están trabajando. Bueno, una va a la universidad y trabaja medio tiempo, pero también nos, nos ayudan porque si no, pues no podríamos pagar todo lo que tendríamos que pagar, renta, comida y billes y todo eso. Entonces hay otras familias que sus niños están pequeños, ahora sí que ellos no tienen ayuda de otras personas y están sufriendo más. ¿Por qué? Porque no ajustan con, para todos los gastos. Entonces yo les pido, por favor, que traigan a votaciones una, un control de renta, por favor, porque hay muchas familias que están sufriendo mucho. Y también personas mayores porque están solas. Nomás están solas allí y pues ellas no pueden pagar todo. Gracias.
Good afternoon, my name is María Chávez. I'm from District Four. I joined the Escuelita because my family was affected with a rent increase. I was, I was also helping them gathering signatures, and I noticed while I was doing that, that there's a lot of families that are worse off than mine. In my case, I have two children, they're already in college and working, well, one is in college and working half-time, but at least they can help us pay some of the expenses. They help us pay rent, food bills, we wouldn't be able to afford it otherwise. But there's other families whose children are young and they can't, they don't have the help that we get, and it's really hard for them to make ends meet at the end of the month. So, I'm asking you to please vote for rent control. Many families are suffering, they really need it. They're the senior citizens, also need this rent control, they're alone, and they can't pay all their expenses. Thank you.
Buenas tardes, miembros del concilio. Mi nombre es Nidia Soto y este, pues estoy aquí igual que todos los compañeros anteriormente hablando, y para reconocer el, el esfuerzo de cada uno de ellos que han estado ahorita en el tiempo de lluvia y con las temperaturas bien frías todavía poniendo su ánimo de hablar con la, con la comunidad y escuchar sus necesidades que son grandes ahorita por la necesidad de un control de rentas. Venimos el pasado seis de febrero y entregamos seis, 600 peticiones, y hoy estamos entregando 700 peticiones, lo cual es cada, cada una de esas peticiones es una historia que conmueve a cada una de nosotros porque están usando el 100% y algunos hasta más, que no pueden pagar su, su renta. Entonces, por favor, cuántas veces necesitamos que venir, cuántas personas necesitamos que venir para, para que ustedes pongan atención en este asunto, que es nuestra comunidad y nuestra ciudad la que está sufriendo. Hay muchas familias desamparadas y cada vez creciendo las familias yéndose a vivir como homeless porque no pueden pagar su, su renta. Todos, la mayoría, para tener un techo estamos pagando arriba de cuatro mil dólares, los que podemos, y luchamos cada día, ¿verdad? Entonces, yo agradezco su atención y, por favor, traigan lo más pronto posible atención a, a este asunto, que es nuestra comunidad y es la comunidad que ustedes, cada uno de ustedes representa. Gracias.
Good afternoon, my name is Nidia Soto, and I'm here again, asking you to please acknowledge the effort that everybody has done. the effort that everybody has done to bring you these signatures. It has been raining, it has been cold, they have put a lot of effort into getting these signatures. Our community needs rent control. On February 6, we brought 600 petitions. Today, we're bringing 700 more. And each one of these petitions represents a story, a story that we have heard and really compels us. It is people that are paying sometimes 100% or even more of their income for rent. It is people, people in the community are suffering. They need your help. It is really hard to pay rent. Most of us are paying over $4,000 in rent, and it is really, really hard. Some people end up homeless because they just cannot afford to pay the rent. There's communities, there are families that are being affected. So these are the communities that you represent. This is an issue, an ongoing issue, that we have... How many times do we have to come here and ask you to please acknowledge this and help us? This is the community that you, each one of you, represent.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Bryant and I'm here to offer a prayer to the City Council members and to the people in the room. And I'd ask for those of you who would like and are inclined, please bow your head and join me in this prayer. It's just the Lord's Prayer, you've all heard it, and I'm sure many of you have said it. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, and deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen. May the Lord bless you and keep you, make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you. The Lord turn his face toward you and give you peace. Thank every one of you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, I'm here with a little bit of a different vibe, so sorry, I don't think I was like fully prepared for everything today. Thank you, Steve.
Welcome to Salinas City Council.
Thank you, I've never been here before. So actually, a little bit about myself, I'm a relatively recent transplant from the East Bay. We bought a home here about three years ago and have a daughter who goes to Sacred Heart. And I just recently became the Director of Development for Door to Hope. So what I'm here to do is to talk a little bit about Door to Hope and what the big event that I'm trying to put together, that I would really appreciate the city's support in getting the word out and, you know, helping make it as big as possible. We were able to secure the Rabobank Stadium, not the rodeo grounds, but like the football field, and it's going to be kind of like a 5K type of an event and a community resource fair. The idea being to make it more... I think addiction and those types of conversations can often get a little, oh, that's someone else, or hey, that's over there. And I really want to encourage everyone in the community to take part in this and talk about prevention, talk about life after addiction and what's possible. And that's really what it's here to do. So I left you guys your folders. And in summary, the 2024 run is going to be focused on prevention of substance use in addiction and making treatment and addiction resources more readily available. We aim to strengthen relationships through education and bringing greater awareness to the mental health and substance use issues impacting our community.
Thank you.
Please consider sponsoring us.
Hi, welcome.
Good evening, we lost our Director of Public Comment here. Everybody that got an award tonight, police or engineer, deserves a raise. Maybe even Carla's money can go towards that, because I think she's not really participating to get her money on that 30 grand. Seems like we're kind of getting taken to the cleaners as constituents there. Gentlemen from Compass Church have some really good points here. We've got a lot of firework activity that happens. What a great event, something I think Councilman McShane here started this last year, Fourth of July celebration. It was a wonderful deal down here at Central Park, and that's a great idea as well. I didn't make it to the last meeting. My wife and I were working on our sixth baby that happened to come, sixth son that was born here Saturday night. But I saw some things in that meeting that were disturbing. I've been here, I've been very critical, shining the light on accountability, this council right here specifically. Probably pretty hard on the merit times, Anthony. As we saw with youth, we can make a quick action and it can be a mistake such as not turning on your mic, not speaking present, right? 25-year-old hasn't had a whole lot of work experience, can make a knee-jerk reaction, make a mistake. And what I saw on this council this last week, see a particular councilman, the top achievement, the best thing he's ever done in his life, was an LGBTQ resolution in regards to discrimination in the workplace here in the city of Salinas. Removed the only woman on a board, the most important thing to our city, water, through bigotry and racism. And all of you that voted for that have shown yourself disqualified to be representatives of our constituents.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, Central Coast Community Watch. If you believe there's a difference between Republicans and Democrats, you're part of the problem. There are 450 full-time city employees here, 250 of which make up the police and fire departments. Now, can you guys tell me why 60% of the budget is allocated to less than 1% of the population? These are historically white jobs. Most of the police officers here are white and most of the firefighters here are white as well. Now, the police unions and the fire union, they started in the 1920s. You know what else would happen in the 1920s? The KKK had 50,000 people march through Washington DC with pride. These two came up together. The new council members, you campaigned on change and peace. Now, your four years have come, your multiple years have come, and all you're doing is maintaining the status quo of Kimberly, McShane, and Barrera. Until we are able to realize that we must abolish qualified immunity and dismantle the police and fire unions, cities across the country will continue to bicker about budget and funds. Just because these unions, they decided that these are dangerous jobs and require six-figure salaries, yet hairstylists have to go through more training than police and firefighters. Police and firework aren't even in the top 10 of the most dangerous jobs in the United States. You're more likely to die on the job being a landscaper or a roofer. Understaffing claims and slow call for service response times are classic police union tactics akin to organized crime protection rackets. The districts that contribute the most money get the fastest response times and the most police presence. The Supreme Court of the United States has ruled multiple times that it is not the job of police to protect the citizens. We could look at District of Columbia versus Warren, 1981, Castle Rock versus Gonzalez, 2005. The people must take the power back.
Thank you.
Civis pacem parabellum.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Picked the wrong meeting to not bring my cane. Good evening, my name is Eric Peterson, and there was an interesting news item about a week ago. While homelessness in the United States increased 12% last year, in the Chattanooga area, it went down approximately 50%. Why? They've got three things going there, and they apparently take all three seriously. One is to create housing, we're trying to do that. Another is to try to provide services, we're trying to do that. But a big difference, they have eviction control. They have agencies working to keep people in homes, they have agencies working with the landlords to make the landlords whole. At a meeting last year, we had a pretty good turnout of landlords, and one of our council members commented that they're the good guys. Well, I've got personal experience with one of the so-called good guys. He evicted me, and the reason he gave me was because he could get more money from somebody else. There's a word for that, greed. And I'm sure that incident was not isolated. I'm sure that individual has done that to other people, and I'm sure that individual isn't the only one doing that to people here. We need to get... I think the idea about eviction control is a great one. Keep people in their homes, help them if they need help, help the landlords if they need help. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, thank you. My name is Luis Ruiz. First off, I'd like to start off by thanking Salinas Police Department. I don't know if you guys go on Instagram, but I'm really big on Instagram, Facebook, and I follow around. And there's two posts specifically that show me a change in the police department. And one of those is upon two instances, I think the police department could have drawn their weapons and, you know, their life wasn't done, they could have shot somebody and taken their lives, but they did not do that. They stayed disciplined, they used every weapon that was on their belt, they took patience. That, to me, speaks volumes because I don't think I've seen that or heard of that as much as I do now. And I think there's a stigma on our police department from our citizens. I think we have a perception of our police department, but I think actions like that, training like that, over time can change the perception and the stigma that's on our police department. I think that's important, and I think we should continue to encourage that, continue to reward these officers for making those tough decisions. You know, nobody wants to go home with a body on their mind. Trust me, I'm a combat vet, I know I live with those still today. So I think it's very courageous for these men to take their time, to take their patience and understand the community that they're working with and what they need to do to allow everyone to know that they're safe. Secondly, from what I understand, there is allocated money that was supposed to go to underdeveloped areas in our community to help as far as infrastructure, you know, fixing potholes, roads and sidewalks. I'd like to know how I can find out where that money's being allocated to. I live in South Salinas, and it's beautiful, everything's beautiful there. But I grew up on the east side of Salinas, and those sidewalks are still messed up, some of them still need some work. And I would just like to understand where the money's being allocated to and see where we can all work together to maybe create a plan, to stay focused and to continue to move forward. I think that's very important. You're only as fast as your slowest person, so let's start helping the people at the bottom so we can all move together. Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Chris Barrera. I'm the President of LULAC here in Salinas, Council 2055. We condemn the racist comments made by Salinas City Councilmember Steve McShane at the January 23rd City Council meeting. Specifically, Councilmember McShane went on a rant where he noted, "We are a dangerous city by some measures depending on where you live, and granted, one zip code might be settled with a knife and another zip code might be settled with some strong talk." This is an attack on our low-income community, and these racist comments should not be the norm and should not be tolerated. No council member should use racist remarks to make a point. We are disgusted by McShane's reference to Latino city council members as amigos, compas, and hombres. He should be ashamed of his offensive words and apologize for such damaging stereotypes.
I'm going to ask that you maintain a level of decorum and not name-call. Thank you.
He should be disciplined and censured for his offensive behavior and not just say, oh, it's just him. That is why his behavior continues. We are very disappointed that no one spoke up against such comments, mainly the mayor, who is responsible for decorum of the city council meetings, city manager, or city attorney. We sent this letter to all city council members, city manager, and attorney on February 5th and have yet to receive any response. We find it very disturbing and disrespectful when community members take time out of their day to come to this podium, most of them terrified to speak in public. And there is a city council person who would rather be doing something else instead of listening, paying attention, and giving them the respect of looking at them. We all need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome. We'll go ahead and start the clock.
Can we?
Sorry, yeah.
Madam Mayor, council members, Mr. Nirm City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, my name is Kelly McMillan. It was my honor to serve as a police officer for 33 years. 28 of those years were here in Salinas. I was appointed Chief of the Salinas Police Department in 2012, and I remained in that role until I retired from law enforcement in 2016. When I applied for the chief's position under City Manager Ray Corpus, the hiring process was extensive and very public. The city conducted a national search for police chief. The search firm interviewed the best qualified candidates and presented six applicants to the city manager. Those were the top applicants. We six were then interviewed by three different oral boards. My first interview was with city department heads. Some of the folks who were in the room were in that interview with me. Next, I was interviewed by three police chiefs from different agencies. Lastly, I was interviewed by a community panel, leaders from education, business, nonprofits, religious organizations, labor leaders, community groups. All interviewed police chief candidates in the West Wing, some of the people in this room were in that meeting, it was packed. After reviewing the results of those interviews, the manager reduced the list from three to six finalists, and the last step of the process occurred right here, right in this room, with an open forum for the public to meet the finalists. We each shared our visions for leading the Salinas Police Department, and we took questions from the community while the manager and council observed, asked questions, and heard opinions about the applicants from their constituents. Only then did the city manager conduct his final interviews and announce his choice for chief of police. The appointment of the police chief is one of the most crucial decisions a city manager can make. I was selected after a very public, months-long process that included written assignments, six different oral interviews, including public ones, that this current selection process is occurring almost entirely out of the public eye seems to contradict the principles of open government and transparency we've all come to expect from our elected leaders. I urge you to reevaluate this election process going forward and seek some public input on who should be our next chief of police. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other... Oh, hi, welcome.
My name is Philip Taberaup and I live in back of the Rodeo Grounds, and we've been there for 30-plus years, give or take, I don't know. But our family, I just recently was given an award by the council for having served on the school board for 22 years. And during the 22 years, I had one person run against me, and one person that seemed to be in favor of the behavior with the Alzal School District. And actually, I won that particular election. And so I have served for 22 years. And when I was first elected to the school board here in Salinas, which encompasses all of Salinas, I thought, eh, I represent District Three, which is, for the most part, part of East, part of North, and part of South Salinas. And I thought about it before, when I was coming in here, I was thinking, God, there's four or at least four of you that represent pieces of East Salinas. One of the things I do with my students at Hartnell, because I'm still teaching, is I talk about the concept of racialization, where you place a particular label on a particular group of people, for whatever the reason. And typically, it has to do with something that is punitive. And about three or four years ago, we censured one of our school board members who has retired, resigned from their, the previous position they had. And I would think, you know, when we say what we say, we don't represent just our district, we represent the whole freaking town, okay? And there's four of you on the school, on the city council, that represent East Salinas. And I think whenever we racialize a group of people, we continue that prejudice that has occurred here in Salinas since I was a kid. And our family has been here for over 100 years, by the way.
Thank you.
So I think I'm kind of qualified to talk.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Claudia Melendez, proud resident of the 1995 District Four. My comments tonight are meant to represent just... My comments tonight are meant to represent just myself. First of all, thank you so much for the service you all provide and thank you also to the engineers and the police officers that were so brave to step up on that day. It was very good to be here for that today. And thank you, you got a very well-deserved raise. I support that, know that you need my approval, but you got it. But tonight here, tonight I'm here because I am very, very upset with Councilmember McShane. What do you mean, Councilman, what you said, depending on where you live, one zip code may be settled with a knife and one zip code may be settled with some strong talk? Did you mean maybe conflict? Do you mean that in areas where poor Latino people live, people settle disputes with knives? Where more affluent whites live, disagreements are settled with strong talk? Is that what you mean? That's not what you said, but smart, educated Latinos have heard about dog whistle politics before. Dog whistle is used to invoke fears about minorities to push agendas. When politicians imply that Latinos are in dangerous parts of the city, settle their arguments with knives, what they're actually implying is that increased police presence is warranted. Is that what you were doing, Councilman? Comments like this perpetuate a problem that existed in this country for centuries and that is the need that some politicians have to demonize people of color. In Salinas, the community of color is hardworking, invested in the present and future of our children. The most dangerous parts of the city you speak of are full of culture, of children who dance, folklorico plays, play sports, write poetry and play music. The women in most dangerous parts of the city are farmworkers who get up before the sun rises and go to bed after the sun sets so you can have food on your table. To describe them as people who settle scores with knives is misguided, disrespectful and highly insulting. I honestly don't expect anybody to understand the damage that your comments cause because that's how dog whistle politics work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello. My name is McGregor Eddy. I live in District 2, Mr. Barrera. I live in a house with a beautiful mural on the wall that some of you may know. I've lived in East Salinas since 1975. I came here to work for Cesar Chavez and I have loved living where I live. I think that the problems in our city are not helped by Mr. McShane's remark and I invite him to engage in a process of reconciliation and resolution so we can move forward. Because peace in our city begins in our city council and in our hearts. And if we can't talk to each other, and I know that this city council is hardworking and cares about the city, even though I may disagree with some of the approaches, this, we are blessed with, not all cities have this. We're very lucky to have this city council and I trust you, Mr. McShane, to make an appropriate healing action that will try, lead to a more peaceful, and I want to say, I lived here in the 80s and 90s, this city is so much more peaceful, so much progress has been made and so many people have participated in it and that that remark is not only inappropriate, it's inaccurate. So you're welcome to come to my house and I'll show you around, but please, Mr. McShane, take the responsibility of political leadership and engage in a healing process in which you acknowledge some part of the damage that has been done. Thank you very much for your patience and your hard work.
Thank you. Last call for public comment.
Okay, good evening. I'm Eloise Shum and I'm a Salinas resident. I'm in District 3 and I'm also a member, a fairly new member for the last six months of the Historic Resources Board. And I just wanted to say that we're in the process of having an art contest for the Historic Resources and any high school or college-level person that would like to draw or paint some, some of our historic resources here in Salinas, they can get more details at our next meeting, which is the first Monday in May. We're sort of trying to get that off the ground so that we can beautify the walls of our Salinas rotunda with artwork and raise awareness about the historic resources. And I also wanted to say that I wanted to congratulate the Chinese community because 10 days ago, it was, is Chinese New Year, so it's the Year of the Dragon. So that's good luck for Chinese people and I hope good luck for all of us. And the other thing that I wanted to say is that I know that some people aren't, from what I encountered today, aren't very supportive of the nominee for the, for the police chief, but I don't see any reason why he shouldn't be considered because he seems to have a good background, 25 years in San Jose. And also, I think it would be the first Asian police chief in Monterey County and it would bring forward diversity and equality and inclusion to our, our services here. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no more in public comment, all right, if you're going to speak in public comment, come get in line, pretty please. Thank you. Excellent.
Hello, Wes White, Salinas Monterey County Homeless Union, co-president. Really, you know, we saw need affordable housing, housing is a human right and yet we're going to do a sweep. We're spending an awful lot of money getting rid of people, but where is the money, especially for people that are signed up for SORT, which we helped create, by the way, you know, your whole team, that's how it started during Shelter in Place. And that's actually what we are demanding right now is, you know, organized space that has running water and electricity. I actually talked to Mr. Pia about this and he kind of gave me a pretty bad grimace, which kind of goes to like the mean-spiritedness of this whole culture. Why do you send everyone to the tracks and then UP comes along, well, it's private property, so we can't do anything about it? But you took away the porta-potties and the dumpsters at the same time. There's no running water on, on Solidad Street, which there could be because there's four sinks. You know, we talk about Member Hep A and we talk about washing hands and everything, but do we mean it? Who's health? Who's safety? Because you're about to take away everybody's possessions while it's raining for the next two weeks. It's, oh, it's not me, it's UP. Where, how did they end up on the tracks? Who put them there? The city did. Last April, took everything everybody got. They have to buy more, you know, that's a, that's a major expense to buy tarps, tents, clothes, food, everything. And their pets, their families. It's ridiculous the way that we spend money and administer and say, oh, not my problem. How is it not your problem? You're, you're actually putting people's lives at risk by sending SORT team out there after we, oh, don't worry, we'll take care of you, but first let me take everything you got. That's theft. It's a raid. When are we going to start treating people like humans? Or are they human? Are they vermin to be abated? Is that your attitude? Because you're, you're, those are the signals that you're sending to people. You want to see them die early in life. You should be supporting them. You've got plenty of money to do it. Stop the sweep.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Tomas Moreno. I just wanted a kind of a reminder since it's talking about other things, but about the rent, you know, it's about controlling the, the, those tenant, I mean, not the tenants, the, the owners, the rent, the other people. Can you hear me?
Yeah, just so we can hear you.
Just to control the owners and the managers and all them because they're over here trying to find excuses to get rid of people just so that they can rent it out for double, you know, triple these places and it's ridiculous. I mean, they want to raise everything, but they don't care that everybody might have to, you know, live three, four, five families in a, in a little place and just become happy slaves for everybody else, you know? It's not right. Well, everybody else is coming from other countries, faraway countries, because they got money and then they can rent these places to them and yet everybody has to huddle in one, one little place while these foreigners come in with a lot of money from other places and, and end up, you know, renting these places with no problem because they got the money. When you should be concerned about the people who live here already and help them out and stop letting this rent getting out of hand from these landlords and owners and people. It's just ridiculous. Just, I mean, it's not about just nodding our head and, oh yeah, poor guys, no, do something about it, you know? Control these, control them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to deem Mary Ann Warden the last public commenter for tonight. Thank you.
We'd still be at it.
In person, I should say. I still have to go to Zoom.
Oh, one of the things I want to do because I may not be here and then next time you come up with our finances, especially for the roads, I want to make sure that the money that's spent this next year, you specifically put down Sanborn and Laurel on those corners. I went through there again today, holes all over, even on the intersection between Madera and Sanborn, I mean Laurel and Sanborn, because I'm on Sanborn, and Organ and Sanborn and it comes up to Laurel. Those are ridiculous and I was told they were never going to be fixed. They need to be fixed. You received the most votes for that bond, I was told for in the registration, that it came from the Allo Cell area. So a lot of that money came from the votes, came from the Allo Cell area and I know there's plenty of money coming from the sales in the Allo Cell area. We should at least spend some money out there fixing our roads. And another thing, make sure the people that are doing the job know what they're doing. They just got through fixing some of the other streets. I think it's Romi Lane, a couple of other ones I went through that were fixes last year and the seams are now not, are cracking. They weren't done correctly. My God, people learn, have our people that we hire, I don't care who, what color they are, what nationality, what they speak, but make sure they're trained to do the proper, to work the proper way. Wow, I was going to say something else about the homeless, but I'll let you go.
We'll let you speak again in the next city council meeting. Thank you. All right. We'll go ahead and close public comment. We'll go over to Zoom. Does any member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on any item in public comment, not on today's agenda? We have one raised hand, Cortez Tax Services. Go ahead and unmute yourself and you have two minutes.
Thank you. The reason why I'm here today is because, like a lot of them, McShane, your underlying racist comment, I'm so embarrassed for you. And word is that you're going to run for mayor. I strongly recommend you do not do that because I am going to make it to where everybody will know every little tiny thing about you, what you've done, what you haven't done. Your words are so disrespectful. And let me just say this, Mayor, excuse me. All I have to say is everybody else in the district that he was talking about, I'm embarrassed for you guys as well that you didn't step up and defend your district.
I'm going to ask that you maintain a level of decorum and you're not name-calling, please. Keep your comments professional.
I've already said what I had to say and I've already heard you and you use that to stop people from making people be accountable. And you need to stop doing that, Mayor. I'd also like to speak on the potholes. You guys, the woman just said right now, utilize people and train them. You guys have numerous times people going in telling you how they're supposed to be done, when they're not supposed to be done, and you guys are just putting Band-Aids. Olive Davis Road, when you guys held up all that traffic in less than a year, that road is already getting destroyed again. You're wasting money and material and, and payroll, you know, budget and it's a waste. I don't know what Public Works is doing, but they're not doing their job. I would also like to speak on rent control. I'd also like to know why the city pays Hart Now money for their Promise Fund. I would also like to know why the city's having to pay money to be a part of the Salinas Improvement Committee when, like, what is that? Like, all those, all that money should go to other, other programs or being able to hire other people. Like, y'all need to get it together and if you-
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Thank you very much for the active participation in today's public comment. We will go on to our item for consideration, 24-047, pavement management and street selection policy. And we have Adriana Robles, our city engineer, here to give the report. Welcome.
Hi. Hold on one second.
Do you have a joke or anything to start off the presentation?
Oh, yes. What was that?
I just, lightening the mood, that's all. Thank you.
Hopefully I can change the mood a little bit. Thank you. Sorry, wrong glasses. Today, I'm here to speak to you about the long-term plan that had been, you know, I had given you a highlight or a preview of that back in the fall. I'm actually joined today by Joe Riery. He's our, he's our consultant. He is with Pavement Engineering Incorporated. He's their senior principal engineer. Let me get started. Okay, so today's action, it's to receive a presentation on pavement conditions. This is a long-term pavement management strategies, funding allocations and street selection and to approve a resolution approving the pavement management and street selection You've seen this slide before, this was presented to you in 2020 when, when PEI put together the pavement management system update. This last spring, last year, spring and summer, they went ahead and, and did an update to that. So just to reiterate, the pavement deterioration, how pavements fall apart, it's, it's basically, there's several factors that go into that. From vehicles and the weight that, the weight and loading that vehicles place on pavement, the condition of the pavement to begin with, climate, rain, as I explained last time, you know, having water seep into the subbase layers of pavement really help to break up pavement. So we're seeing that right now. You know, we see it every, every year. Obviously, with the more rain we get, the faster that pavement is going to deteriorate. Also, it's resources, it's staffing, it's funding in order to get repairs done. Again, this, this is the pavement condition of our city. What you see on the left there, that's, the colors represent what the condition of the streets are with green being the best condition that we have and red being the worst condition that we have. On average, the city has a pavement condition index of 53. Again, PEI updated the pavement management program. Our system is called a Street Saver. They, they updated that last, last year. One of your attachments is that report that they provided in September. Now with regards to the strategies, there's various pavement management strategies. There could be the best first, the worst first, or the critical point. What we're moving towards, we have tried the other strategies before and what we're moving towards is the critical point management. And so basically what that means is that we address streets before they fall into the next category when it comes to their condition. And that means that we address them before they become a bigger problem. So whether that means, you know, we get them, if you see on this chart, we get them before it, when, when they need a slurry seal, which is minimal treatment, before they become something which is a higher, which is a chip seal or, you know, farther down, either an overlay or a full reconstruction. Now what we're proposing is, is a distribution of funds and how funds would be distributed. We obviously know funds- We obviously know funds are limited. The burden that we have with our roadways every year increases significantly. But what we're asking for is a policy that distributes funds regardless of the amount of money that gets allocated. So what we've defined is 60% for major streets, 30% for residential streets, 10% is stopgap or maintenance. Again, this is not specific. We're not asking for any specific amount. We're asking for percentage of allocation. And basically, what we're looking at, if we're talking about like major streets, what we're looking at is to give each street a grade, right? So what we're proposing is to take the PCI, which is, like I said before, the pavement condition index, give that a score. We also take the traffic that flows on the roadways, and we give that a score. We take the weighted effectiveness ratio. The weighted effectiveness ratio basically is how effective the treatment that we're going to apply to it, how effective that is. So that also gets a score. We add all of these up, and that's how each roadway, each major street would get a number associated, a score associated with it. This would, this would basically tell us throughout the city, through different segments, what our priorities should be. Now, with regards to residential streets. For residential streets, we're looking at a two-phase approach. So what we asked our consultant to do was first to take a look at the average condition, the average weighted PCI for each of our districts. Last, last September, when I was before you, we had received some money at the end of the year, and we were asked to distribute it evenly across all districts. Unfortunately, the condition of our pavement in our different districts is not the same. What we would like to do is first to equalize the pavement condition in each of our districts. That doesn't mean that because your district is older and somebody else's district is newer, that, you know, we should evenly distribute funds because the older district at this point needs more attention and needs to be raised up. So what we're asking as a phase, as a first phase to this policy is that we first try to equalize the districts when it comes to pavement condition. How we would do that would be with an alternate PCI scoring. This table is slightly different than the table I showed you initially. It rates, scores, it gives a higher number to pavement conditions that are lower. We would use that, again, with the weighted effectiveness ratio to come up with a score. And this would be per district. So that means in each district, we would have a list of streets, basically, that scored the highest, and that's how we would go in order of that, of that list. The sec, okay, the second phase of this, when we have reached a level where we're relatively equal, when we're speaking to pavement condition, then we would take the funding that's allocated to residential streets, which is the 30%. And what we're saying is we would distribute those funds in an equitable distribution based on pavement area. That means that the districts that have the highest number, the highest area would receive the appropriate amount of funding to maintain them within that, within that pavement condition. Obviously, as the city grows and as the city changes, this would, this would change as well. And in order to select streets, to put together a street list for the second phase of residential streets, we would take the pavement condition index score as we defined it also for the major streets. We would take the weighted effectiveness ratio. We'd add those up. We'd get our score for each of the streets within each district. So what we're asking tonight is for council to approve the pavement management and street selection policy. The next steps after that, staff will develop a street list for major streets and residential streets that will be presented to you with the SB1 report. Obviously, SB1, that's our primary funding source for pavement management. And then, after that, later this fall, what our goal is, is to develop a pavement preservation ordinance. We've heard the complaints with regards to utility companies coming in, cutting up, you know, new pavement. So we are, our goal is to move forward with a pavement preservation ordinance and an excavation moratorium. And I welcome any questions you may have.
Excellent. Thank you. I will start to my left. Councilmember Sandball, questions?
How is a major street going to be classified? You know, like, for example, Cassin's community is a major repair, but is it necessarily a major street or?
So classification, there's a classification that's already been made. We were actually talking about this earlier today. We classify major streets as arterials and collectors. So there are certain volumes and there are certain usage of roadways that classify them as major street. This is also, this is defined in our general plan. And this is something that we've also already provided to, like, Caltrans and different agencies. We're going through a refinement of that with this general plan update. But we are moving towards really defining which roads are used as major streets.
Because the other day I was driving through Councilmember Raro's district, and Hebron, man, that is a roller coaster of a street, and that's used very often. There's some streets in my district that, based on the pavement, the way I read the plan, may never qualify for improvement because, like, if it's a small circle and there's only two homes in that area, you know, there's, I did it right along with Mr. Pia one time, and there's, and I forgot the name, but it's off of Iris, and there's a little circle where it doesn't actually have any pavement. It's all been brushed away by, by the garbage trucks. And so how do we be able to address that? If we, if we do something like this, would they just, you know, how do we address that?
Well, basically, that's where that, like I said, that first phase of the residential streets that, what I hear you saying is that it's probably like a small local street. So the first phase of our residential, residential street management or pavement management program is, is to address the worst first. That's the way we're proposing to do that. The qualifiers, if you saw on the, on the chart there, is it's an alternate on the PCI condition. The score would be higher if it, if it's a lower condition.
Right. Those are my questions. I have some comments, but thank you.
Councilmember Rocha.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this. It's, generally speaking, I think, a really good direction to go in. And I like the flexibility it allows for the city to address this through various ways. I have a question pertaining to Phase Two of the Residential Street Selection Plan. It states that the Residential Street Selection Plan involves dividing the available budget between six city council districts. Based on the percentage of pavement area within each district, the percentage of funds will be allocated as follows. For District One, it's 11%. For District Two, it's 12%. For District Three, it's 28%. For District Four, it's 14%. For District Five, it's 13%. And District Six, it's 22%. I wanted to know why there was such a significant discrepancy between District Three, arguably District Six, and the other districts.
So what we're looking at there is specifically, like I said, the area of pavement. District, the different districts have different pavement areas. You know, District Three has smaller blocks, has more streets. So it, and also, it's like the changing of the designation, right? So if we're saying collectors, arterials and collectors are already taken out, we're just looking at residential streets. If we're looking at smaller blocks, we have more area of street.
Got it. So is it, because, for example, the lowest percentage is District One. Does that mean District One's overall pavement area is smaller than?
Correct.
Understood. And looking at the current breakdown of it, it would result in District Three and District Six getting around 50% of all the available budget for that specific category. When you take in the arterial road component of what the budget would be, do you know if the number is different in terms of what the percentages would be breakdown per district? Or, never mind, because I guess you're not taking districts into consideration for.
We're not taking, when it comes to the major roads, we are not breaking them up by district.
In looking at this current allocation breakdown, do you think it would make sense, and obviously, this might throw wrench into everything. I'm not an engineer. I don't understand the work that you do to the degree that you do, right? So please feel free to give me as honest as an opinion as you need to. Would it make sense to drop both District Three and District Six to 20%? And that 10% difference, allocate that amongst the remaining four districts of District One, Four, Two, and Five, which would each bring them up by an additional 2.5%?
Again, what we were looking at is basically an even distribution based on the amount of, the area of pavement.
Understood.
This, this can change, obviously, because we are going through different designs. I don't know if you saw out here, we have it in the foyer. There are, we are looking at modifying some street sections. We are looking at, you know, reducing some lanes. We are looking at doing things to, to change our layouts. So this is not static, right? We would obviously analyze it. If something changes, we would go back and analyze. The percentages are not static at this point. All we're saying is for the second phase, we do an even distribution based on the pavement area.
Understood. All right, that's my only question. I look forward to hearing what my colleagues have to say.
Councilmember Raro, questions?
Yes. Ms. Robles, I'm going to ask you some questions. I'm, I'm very ignorant on a lot of these issues. You're the professional, but I have to ask, so bear with me on, try and understand this being that you're asking us to set policy on. The $16 million that was just allocated for Williams Road, is, is this going to impact it in any way?
You mean the $16 million that we were awarded?
Yes.
For, no, because the $16 million that we were awarded for Williams Road was a grant that we, technically, we still haven't moved it forward. But it's a, it's a grant that we chased after. It's a, it's a safety improvement grant. That would not change this. What it would do ideally in the long run is if we were able to modify and to fix Williams Road, which is our huge goal, then that changes the PCI. It could change the PCI for the district. So the pavement condition of the district might change slightly. But Williams Road is not a local road. It's not a residential street. It's not classified as that. Williams Road is a major road.
So being that you're saying it may change slightly, that money is going to stay there for Williams Road?
The money is not going away from Williams Road.
Thank you. Is there any ARPA money involved here?
No. Again, we are not speaking of any specific funds. We're not speaking of any specific amounts. We're simply saying whatever money gets allocated, because we obviously know that, you know, different years, allocations change. Whatever money gets allocated, this is the way the distribution would be.
Yeah. I know a word that we like to use here, equitable. I always hear this word everywhere I go. Trying to be fair. As one of your council members, one of your public servants here, I feel the Alisal has been ignored for many, 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 many years. And I've even heard that from developers. My, my question is, and I understand that you're looking at different pavement areas. But I think if we're really going to get serious about this pavement management policy, shall we take care of, I just heard from one of my colleagues, I mean, Hebron, some roads are really bad. And you know what, just in my simple logic, I would say, if we got this program going, why aren't we fixing, and it doesn't matter what district it is, but if we have a street that's really bad, why aren't we tackling that one? Why aren't we focusing on that one?
So can you specify what your question is? Is it, why are we not focusing on the worst roads?
My question is, I know from time to time, we come here, we need to set policy. We don't have enough money. But I say, well, how much money do we have? And why don't we focus on one of the worst streets in town and just get it done? Instead of distributing, cutting the pie and distributing it, but actually making something happen, taking care of a street? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And we've already tried, we've technically already tried, like, the worst first approach. Which simply, the, the problem we come against is there simply isn't enough funding to address it. And, and part of the challenges is, is we have nothing right now that qualifies exactly what the worst is. We have the pavement condition, but, you know, having a gravel alley does not mean that that serves or benefits more people.
Yeah.
For us to invest in, okay, let's go ahead and pave that alley, because technically, that is zero in our list as far as pavement condition. What we're trying to look at is what is the overall benefit for everybody? That's why we're focusing the bulk of the funding on major streets, because major streets impact basically most of us.
Ms. Robles, can you mention, is that, what would be a major street to you right now that needs fixing?
There's a lot of them.
Well, just mention one.
Baranda, Abbott.
Okay.
Those are major streets that need fixing.
Okay, let's look at Baranda, for example. Baranda is, is a street that impacts almost every district. So I guess my question is, and you know what? When I think about efficiency, I think about, yeah, getting the best work done. But I know when we try to push local developers, smaller developers, we say, well, they don't qualify for different reasons. In this policy, why don't we say, you know what, let's focus on Baranda Street, and let's get it done?
We could do that and let quite a few other streets completely fall apart. What this, what this is really trying to show is what we're trying to do with the major streets is really come up with that list. What is our worst street? And what is the street that, you know, the weighted effectiveness ratio, what that's trying to show us is where can our money be used most effectively? And that's what the list is going to show. We still haven't come up with that list, but that's what that list is going to show. It goes based off of pavement condition. It goes based off of the volume of cars that go on that roadway. And it goes off of where can our money go farther?
Ms. Robles, my last question. And I think the city has done several traffic studies on identifying which are our worst roads or more used roads. Would that be correct?
Yes, we've done, we do traffic studies with regards to traffic. We've never, we've never combined the two. So we've done pavement, pavement management updates. So we've done pavement, pavement management updates like we did last year, where it identified what our pavement condition is. We've done traffic studies where we know how many cars flow in, in all, in our major streets. Those two have never been, come together. So we've never, you know, made that correlation. And then we're adding a, a third component, which, like I said, it's, that's where the, the critical, what's it called? The, the critical point management comes in. It's, it's that third component that says, we're gonna get, we're gonna address fixing that road before it falls into a category where we need another bigger fix to it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Councilmember Sornio, questions?
You know, actually, I'm just, I'm just going to be reserving for, for comments. I, I do understand the recommendation, but I just, I, I'm just very concerned about what we have in front of us, so I'm just going to reserve for comments.
Okay. Thank you. I have no questions. I'll go out to the public. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Hi, welcome.
Just two comments. First, please, no more chip ceiling. From a bicyclist's point of view, chip ceiling can be a total nightmare. Bicycle tires wear far faster than truck tires, automobile tires. And if you want a great example, go out and spend five or 10,000 bucks on a quality bicycle with quality wheels and quality tires. Those tires will wear very quickly on chip ceiling. And worse, when things go wrong and the human body comes in contact with that chip ceiling, it's a lot worse. My second comment, deterioration of pavement comes from age and use or fatigue. It also comes from shoddy construction. I know I sound like a broken record. My latest example, and I don't, I really don't go out and look for these, these find me. My daughter and I were going out to the, where the veteran service officer is out on LaGuardia. That's where I used to put on bicycle races for 23 years. I know that area. When it was rebuilt, completely rebuilt, like, what, eight or 10 years ago or something? In two or three years, about two years ago, two years after that, it was coming up in pieces. Now there's a whole section that seems to be growing. It seems that whatever plant life was under the pavement has worked its way up and is still alive and is destroying the pavement. I don't think I could use that course for a bicycle race today. I don't think it would be safe. Maybe I'd be lucky, but I'm not able to put on races. But there again, we paid somebody good money and got ripped off. And that has been the case all over Salinas. As I say, I don't look for these things. They find me, just because I know what it's like to be on a bicycle and have to pay attention to the pavement because otherwise things go wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to comment on this item? Hi, welcome.
Here I am again. I apologize, I didn't realize this was coming up, because I'd just gotten here. Williams Road, Tony, you know, you were at the meetings with me at the firehouse. Williams Road was supposed to have been fixed over 20 years ago, from Alisal Street down to Del Monte. That was never done. Oh, I've come here so many times about that. We were told by PG&E they were going to put poles underneath, to fix our electricity, underneath the ground. They never did. They just put new poles in. We've been lied to over and over again. Some of our money went, and I had voted for it, and I got chewed out for it, to fix, finish fixing Laurel. And it was supposed to come back. It never did. Airport Road, it's the same thing. We'll fix it from 101 to Moffett and, and to the Elks, but from the Elks on, it's a disgrace. I came down here and saw our city manager, Moore, and, and our, Joe, because it was air show, and I was embarrassed because everybody was asking me, why do we have such big holes there when all these people are coming for the air show? And so they went out and they filled up some of the holes. We've been told that was going to be fixed, you know, when you're home and you're here, well, Airport Road's going to be fixed, and it never happens. Never happens. We need, if we say we're going to do something, then let's do it and make sure that money is there for the project that we were told to do and to, we voted on. Thank you. Sorry, but.
No need to apologize. That's your First Amendment right to be in public comment. Thank you. We will go ahead and close public comment and go to Zoom. Any member of the public wish to comment on this item? We do have a member on Zoom. Dwight, you are unmute, go ahead and unmute yourself. You have two minutes.
Hi, everyone. I agree with Supervisor Barrera. I think Williams Road should be fixed sooner than later. I don't think it should, I don't see why it's considered a major road and we have to work with the residential roads first. It should go by which road is worst first. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we'll go ahead and close public comment on Zoom. We'll come back to councilmembers for final comments and action. I will start to my left, Councilmember Sandoval.
Well, thank you to our consultant, Adriana, and your staff. I mean, this is a heavy lift. The reality is, we, we don't have enough money to fix our roads. And so I appreciate your approach. I'm going to read a comment from one of my residents, but I, I do want to bring attention to Davis Road, because although we spent a lot of money on it recently, it has gotten really bad, and I think that was only done a year ago. So I didn't see a whole lot in the plan, and maybe that's going to be a policy coming forward, about the quality of work that we get from some of our contractors and how we can hold them accountable to do better work. There's a, a section I mentioned to you and the city manager on San Juan Grande Road. We only did it a couple of months ago, but the transition from the old to the new is like a roller coaster. So I want to read his comments. It says, "I'm writing in support of the pavement management and street selection policy and hope after it's adopted, it's implemented as written. Specifically having a realistic plan that addresses the problem of streets and disrepair with inadequate funds to, relative to need, to the need made overwhelming through longtime neglect is welcome. As a resident of District Five, I'm glad that this policy recognizes and addresses the fact that North Salinas has residential streets in the worst condition citywide. Rectifying inequities in present need or past decisions by prioritizing residential streets in District Five is fair and appreciated." I know we have a lot of issues citywide. I wish there was a, well, I think this is a pretty good plan, to be honest. I wish there was a more of a magic plan, because there are a lot of our cities, streets that need bad repair. But I appreciate your approach, and I'm in support of the plan.
Councilmember Rocha.
Thank you. Adriana, can you please come to the podium? I want to take a moment to thank you really for this plan. No plan's going to be perfect, but you obviously put a lot of time and energy into this plan, and it's going to be obviously difficult to break down and fully understand the complexity of the plan, but I want to take a moment to appreciate you for all of your hard work on this. Certainly, I recognize the short staffing we have in your department and short staffing we have in engineers in this city, so just want to express my appreciation for you on that front.
Thank you.
In looking at this plan, it makes sense to me with 60% going to major streets, 30% going to residential streets, and 10% going to stopgap maintenance. In looking at the breakdown financially, district per district, I understand the discrepancy in amounts, but I think we could make it work a little bit more. I, I mean, I, I get why District Six and District Three have more amounts, and it's because District Three has 9.7 million square feet, District Six has 7.4 million square feet, and then District Four, Two, and Five have around 4 million square feet, and then District One has around 3 million square feet. That being said, I do think there's a, a place, and it's just a recommendation that I could put out, and maybe we don't have to adopt it at this one, but we could do it at a different time, but I do think that bringing down District Three to 20% and District Six to 20%, having that 10% difference go to the other districts would be more equitable, because even though they're not as large geographically and square foot wise as District Three and District Six is, they do have a long history of neglect, and I think that making that additional investment in those districts is going to be a step in the right direction to, to have a greater impact. My concern with the amount being so low for those respective districts is I don't want to do an inch deep, a mile wide. I want to make sure we can make a little bit more investment. To what degree that additional 2.5% will make a difference, I'm not sure, but I want to recognize the square foot difference, which is significant from District Three and District Six to the other districts, but still make that, that effort to make that equitable investment. But outside of that, the structure of the policy, to me, makes sense with 60%, 30%, and 10%, and also with the street selection goals being to equal distribution of funding across city districts based on, based on pavement area and to equalize pavement condition across city council districts. That is, you know, striving towards equitable policymaking, and I want to acknowledge that in this document. So thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you. Councilmember Barrera, final comments?
Yes, I want to, and, and thank you for your great work. Mr. P., I'm going to, this comment goes, we were here nine years ago when we were discussing Measure G. And you know, Measure G is a very passionate measure for the simple fact, it was a beautiful brochure, and people were excited about it. I mean, it, it passed by a great percentage. And you know, one of the exciting things was that we were telling our residents, the people of Salinas, we're going to fix our streets, fix our sidewalks, and fix potholes. And, and I know it's very difficult, and sometimes we don't have money, but I think after nine years, we would be able to say, you know, let's identify certain roads and really start fixing them. You know, when the people of Salinas start seeing that, hey, they're actually doing something, that brings excitement. And, and then people start seeing that we are spending the money correctly. So I, I value staff. I mean, this is hard work, but you know, I think what's important when we set policies like this, people should be able to, the people out there should be able to see there's a difference, you know? We're setting policies, but that are making a difference. So Mr. P., I think with you and your staff, however, we can do this. Let's start, let's start fixing a major road. Me personally, I don't care what district it is, as long as it's starting to get done. And you know, I have a, Williams Road, many years ago, we had money to fix that road. We were told we're going to borrow the money because we need it somewhere else. I even said from this podium, we're never going to see that money back, and we never saw it. But there was money allocated for Williams Road. So I think that's where I'm concerned. But, but thank you for your work, and Mr. P., let's, let's do some good work out there. Thank you.
Councilmember Sornio, final comments?
Yes, and, and I, I agree as well. I think that looking at the policy, there's definitely some good, some really good points. I, I really did also like the, the 60, 30, 10. My only concern is going to, is going to be that I, I also feel that the percentages that are going to the districts, and again, I, I understand how, how the percentages came up, but to know that I, that, that like Councilmember Sandoval says, Hebron's in District Four, and, and Hebron, and Hebron Street is, is one of those streets that hasn't been, hasn't been repaired for quite some time. You think about Fremont, you think about Terrace, you think about some of those roads, and those haven't been touched for a while. Unfortunately, I, I, I just need a little bit more time to, to look at this, this plan here, just, I, I've, I've already studied it, but I just, I, I would like to ask for the support of my colleagues to be able to bring this plan back. I feel that it, it's a, it's a good sound plan, maybe there can be some small adjustments, but I would like to see if I could get some help with the city attorney, if, if we can bring this item back at a separate date to have some more time to work with staff about some of the percentages.
Councilmember Sornio, this can be brought back. The council will just need to take action to continue it to a later meeting.
Okay. Now, would that come in the form of a motion?
It would.
I'd like to make a motion to bring this back at a later time, to be able to work with staff on some of the percentages, so that we can go ahead and pass this policy.
Point of clarification, in terms of the percentage wise, what exactly are you hoping to measure that by? Because right now, we're looking at the square foot of districts. Are, are you hoping to just equalize the numbers to result in a little bit greater, increase percentage wise for the other respective districts?
Correct.
Okay. Would you be comfortable with that going back to Finance Committee and us working on it there?
I, I would like for this, to this to go back to Finance Committee and then see if we could work with staff to develop something there in Finance Committee.
Yeah. I, I would like for it to be that way, only that way it's through a structured process as opposed to one-on-one meetings with staff.
I'd like to make a motion to, to, to bring it back to Finance Committee.
To discuss the percentages.
With city staff, yeah.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
Okay. That threw me for a loop. Just in the context that we've been talking about it since 2020, it came to council in March of 2021. Certainly, it's been a longstanding discussion, and I'm surprised we need more time on it. But that being said, the motion is made to bring it, or to take it, I don't think it ever went to the Finance Subcommittee, so the motion is to take this item to Finance Subcommittee to work more comprehensively with staff on the percentages.
That's correct.
That motion is made by Councilmember Sornio, seconded by Councilmember Rocha. Did I get that all correct?
You did.
Excellent. City Manager would like to weigh in.
I certainly appreciate, thank you, Mayor. I certainly appreciate the work of our consultant and Adriana and her team. I just want to be cautious that it will not be coming to the March Finance Committee meeting, which is days away, and so as identified in the report, May of 2024, as we identify streets, you will, the Finance Committee will see this in April, so we have a tight timeline to get that done, just to clarify.
So, point of clarification, that it will not be at the next Finance Committee meeting. With that, I'll go ahead and call for that vote. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yes.
Councilmember Sornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
No.
Motion passes. Thank you. All right. We'll go on to Salinas City Council Consent Agenda. There are nine items on consent. Would anyone like to pull an item for separate vote or discussion? I'll go to the council to my left. Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Rocha?
I would, I would also like to pull item 067.
Okay. Councilmember Barrera?
I was interested in that one.
Okay. And Councilmember Sornio?
Put me on as well. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And I'll go out to the public. Does any member of the public wish to comment on an item on consent?
41.
41, okay. Yes, sir.
067.
Okay. All right. Did I hear from Marion Warden? You wanted to pull an item?
Yes.
41.
41, okay. All right, I'll go to Zoom. Any member on Zoom wish to pull an item on consent? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment, or excuse me, consent, public, consent, public, thank you, pulling the consent calendar. Got tongue twisted there. All right, council, I'll need a motion to approve the remaining items.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Barrera, seconded by Councilmember Sornio. On the remaining items on the consent agenda, 092, 073, 045, 055, 064, 065, and 066. Call for the vote, please. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Sornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes. Excellent. We'll go to 041. Two members of the public have pulled this item. Mr. White, we'll let you go first.
Okay.
You have two minutes. Welcome.
All right. Hello, Westside Salinas Minority County Homeless Union Co-President. Worried about the about the Amendment to Service Agreement for removal of unlawful campsites with Smith Inright from ninety-five to three forty-five thousand. That's like two fifty. That's a quarter million. I think in 2018 or so, we were paying them two fifty a year, fifteen thousand a one, and you know, I think you guys blocked a million dollar one, and then they got given a four million dollar one. So, like, what do they need money for besides unlawful campsites? If you're signing people up for services, you should afford people an address, somewhere they can be twenty-four hours a day, so that that way they're separated as being harmless, not homeless, especially the people that you claim to be serving. You're going to be wiping out a bunch of people. As soon as people get ripped off the tracks, they're going to go onto city property. And what's going to happen? Job security. You can't be here. Where are they supposed to be? With what? In the wet. And you don't think they're going to get health risks from that? You don't think anybody's going to get pneumonia, or possibly worse? We're not serving people. We're feeding ourselves all kinds of money on elite class of people who just laugh it, people that are on unfortunate circumstances. This is not all by their own doing. You can tell all kinds of people are ending up out of their houses, out of their homes, into the streets. They are your residents. They are your, our sisters and brothers. And we need to take it more seriously than we're doing, and just by driving people out, saying you can't be here, and taking everything they got, that's unconstitutional. You know, we should have the life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, dignity, decency, and dominion over our own lives. And if we can't afford rent, then why is the punishment, you can't have anything? We need to do it different, and paying these guys is not the way to go.
Thank you. Ms. Warden, you also pulled this item?
I was forced to come on Front Street and to come over the overpass to Market Street before I came here. And the people that are camping along the railroad track is ridiculous. I mean, it's sad, really sad. Well, we've got a huge lot where we have the carnival, that we could put a great big huge tent there. Let's them bring their own little tents so they can have their own little individual things there. At least they would be out of the rain and out of the mud, and maybe have the porta potty. And I know we have the trailers with the little showers. At least they'd treat them as human beings. It's really sad to see these people. And no matter how much I try to help them, there isn't enough. We need to find something that we could do as a city and the railroad to fix it, so get all that. You know, I, we rode the train from here to Seattle. I did not see that anywhere in Oregon or in Washington. Only when we got down to, from San Jose on, that we saw all this. It really is sad when you see all these people coming on the train and seeing this. It's a disgrace for us. We could do something better, but we need maybe the railroad working with us to get someplace where we could put them all, where they'd be a little safer and warmer. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, I'm seeking action on this item.
Good job, group.
I'll second. Motion made by Councilmember Barrera, seconded by Mayor Craig. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Osorio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
No.
Councilmember Sandoval?
No.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, ID zero six seven, the 2024 Pavement Improvement Project. I will start, oh, council members, we do have a member of the public that has pulled this item, Eric, if you don't mind.
You know by now I don't.
We've known each other a long time.
That's an interesting way to put it. Anyway, my name is Eric Peterson, and my comments earlier on the earlier agenda items still apply to this, but we really need to take action to ensure that we don't get ripped off, because one way would be to hire somehow enough city employees to do most of the work. There'd be more control over the employees. And contractors, some of them go away. Additionally, this is a really good reason, brings up a really good reason to bring back the Bicycle Advisory Committee. So, when things are done to streets, they're done in favor of bicyclists, not against bicyclists. I know it's a county project on Davis Road. That is a cycling nightmare. And bringing back a Bicycle Advisory Committee wouldn't have prevented that, but would prevent similar things from happening here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will go down the gauntlet. Councilmember Sandoval, you pulled this item.
I just want to thank you for bringing this forward. You know, North First Street in District Five, and of course, Adams didn't make it on the list this time, but I'm hoping it gets done soon, as that is a very busy road. So, thank you very much, and with that, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Sandoval, seconded by Councilmember Rocha. Going on for comment, Councilmember Rocha.
Comment? I had a question. Hi, Adriana. I wanted to ask you just for clarification. In this particular, let's see here, what would it be called? CIP. As I understand, this is a complete redo, a reconstruction, full depth reclamation of Independence Boulevard, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Do you know by any chance when we expect to start on the project? Should this be approved?
Well, normally, it takes between a month or two just to process the contract. So, ideally, ideally, we would start this May and June timeframe, so that we hit it at the perfect time to work on pavement.
Thank you so much. I want to thank you a lot for your advocacy on this project. I know you really were expressing to me the need to do this road entirely, especially considering what it ranked at the level of severity in the road, and the need to do this right and do it once. So, thank you so much. I also want to thank my colleagues for your support on Independence. This has been top priority for over a decade for this district, and certainly one that I had made a priority during my tenure on council, and none of this would have been possible without the support and collaboration of my colleagues. I want to thank you a lot for your support on this, and happy to support the item. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Barrera, you pulled this item?
Yeah, there's no doubt. This is a good celebration here, and I think, going back to Mr. Peterson's comments, I think we have to make sure that the work is done right, or we don't have to go back, or somehow hold the developers accountable to make sure that it's getting done.
The contractors.
Thank you for that.
Councilmember Osorio, you also pulled this item?
Yes, I just have one question and one comment. So, I see on the list for Toute Street, I just wanted to know, is this the, is this Toute Street? I remember that there was the, there was kind of like a partnership with, because Toute Street is half of its District Two on the side that is in between Laurel and East Market.
Mm-hmm.
Half of it is in District Two, and half of it is in District Four. Is this, is this the same project that we're, that that project, the one point three million dollars is going to? Just wanted to clarify that.
So, Toute Street here, what we're identifying is basically, it does extend into the multiple districts.
Yes.
One of the things that I believe I spoke with Councilmember Rocha and Councilmember Sandoval about is that because the numbers came in so favorably, is that we're looking to extend the areas where we didn't get all the, all the, all the fix that we wanted. So, Toute is probably one of those streets that we would extend the limits to.
Okay, okay, good. And so, just wanted to make sure, and that was, the question came up, because there is that, that area between Laurel and East Market that both is on District Two, and half of it's District Four. So, I look forward to seeing that. And then just wanted to say, again, very supportive of the Tampico Avenue and Pacheco Street on this as well. So, thank you, and glad to support.
Okay, call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Osorio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much for the report. We will go on to Councilmember Reports, Appointments, and Future Agenda Items. I'll start to my left. Councilmember Sandoval.
Yes, thank you. We had a great Salinas Valley Solid Waste meeting, and also, I want to bring up a comment that I saw from Leo de la Rosa and Sylvia, talking about advertising our city council meetings across different social media platforms. I know we're working to get more community input, but that could also include live streaming on social media. I know a lot of other cities do that. Everyone's on social media, so it'd be a great avenue to get more public participation. So, you know, I'd like us to look into that. I don't know if I have support from another one of my colleagues.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rocha?
Thank you. I had a great meeting with the team from the Car Lake Big Sur Land Trust, Car Lake Management Team, part of the Big Sur Land Trust. So, had a great opportunity to talk to them about their future for that particular project, and what they need from the city of Salinas. So, really want to be, really want to express my gratitude for them on all their work. I was able to attend a Community Human Services Personnel Committee, and then later on that week, a Community Human Services Board meeting, and also Senior Valley Solid Waste Authority Board meeting. Good work happening at both agencies. I did have a tour of the Monterey One Water Treatment Plant, as well as an orientation for that board. So, I want to thank Paul Shudo and his staff for taking me out to that particular site and sharing with me all the amazing work they're doing there. Looking forward to serving on that board. And that's all I have to report for today. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes, Mr. P., I want to say thank you to you and your staff for having the budget meetings at the breadbox. Also, just a heads up, Mr. Jacobs and Mr. P., we need to fix, we've done a great job cleaning Car Lake, but we need to fix that fence. It's just, it's in bad shape. I mean, we spend, I think it was like a four million dollar project, and we've got to go in there and do it right. Hopefully, we can do that. I want to thank La Escuelita. You know, these folks, they're not charity cases. They're hardworking people. But the reality in Salinas and even other cities, I mean, think about it, they pay four thousand dollar rents. You know, and these folks are looking for some support. Mr. Callahan, I know I've reached out to our state officials. Maybe there is something, and one of the ladies did say, how many times do we have to come up here, to get some kind of answer. And I think we should be in a place where we can talk to them about what is possible that we can do, or maybe we can't do anything. I don't know. But I think we need to address this group. For them to bring in six hundred signatures and now seven hundred signatures, they're doing a lot of work, and we need to address that with building healthy communities in Mi Escuelita. Also, I want to thank the many volunteers that we do have in Salinas. A lot of great things are happening. I want to thank the Parks and Recreation Staff for the Firehouse Recreation Center, all the activities that they're having for our seniors out there. You know, we're averaging about seventy-five seniors that go out there on a daily basis, and these are good things happening. And I also want to, the last thing I want to say is thank you to all the different car clubs that have been stepping to the plate, helping families in need, helping children in need as well, with toys, with food, and what have you. So, I think Salinas is a very giving city, so thank you very much for that.
Councilmember Osorio?
Yes, thank you. I did want to, to say congratulations to the ALSL Center for the Fine Arts. They had their open house a couple of weekends ago, and they had a really good turnout there. And obviously, it, sometimes it seems like the arts are always one of those divisions. It's always not as, not as funded as some other ones, but they're doing the best job that they can out there. And I just, it was a great event, and I just wanted to say thank you for that. I also wanted to say thank you to the Salinas Soccer Complex for having me out there last week also, just to talk about their future plans and some ideas that they had. And obviously, it's no doubt that they have so many families and youth out there every single weekend, so just wanted to say, happy to, happy to go out there, just see what's going on. Also, I don't know if this is a city staff project, but in speaking with some community members, it was, it was brought to my attention that there was some possible plans for a Korean War memorial that has plans. I'm not sure if those, if that's a project that city staff is working on, but I just wanted to see if there's a way that I can, that city attorney, Jim Pia, could get me updated if there's any information that is on that. So, looking forward to seeing where that project is at, and looking forward to supporting it. The other thing is, I was going to bring up the fence at Car Lake. There's definitely families, there's lots of families that walk through there every single day, and it's just a hazard to not even have some tape up there and just making it aware. So, I would just say if we can get out there and at least put some caution tape out there, or some signage, I think it's a little dangerous in that area. And that's all my comments. Thank you.
An update on LAFCO. I just want to let the council know that LAFCO has filed an appeal of the trials, the trial court's judgment in the case of Monterey Peninsula Water Management District versus the Local Agency Formation Commission of Monterey County on the case and the determination that LAFCO feels it was wrongly decided. So, more to come on that, but just wanted to give a brief update on that. And there was a press release that was, that went out about it. I do want to acknowledge, we did have our first fireworks Subcommittee meeting. Thank you to Sam Klemic and Battalion Chief Chris Knapp, who are gearing up for fireworks season and really have a comprehensive plan, and sought feedback from the council on the Subcommittee on how to address, comprehensively address the issue. I had an invitation months and months and months ago. It actually came from the Veterans' Day barbecue from Colonel Trotter of Fort Hunter Liggett to come down and have a tour of Fort Hunter Liggett. And having been a lifelong resident of Monterey County, I'd never been on base before. So, I visited last Tuesday and really took a look. It's a hundred and sixty thousand acres, really a remarkable training facility. And my bonus son goes down there and trains for the National Guard, so it was a privilege and an opportunity to be able to go on base and see what they do, and also had a really good, robust discussion about potential partnerships for purchasing of equipment, which I thought was unique. I know that the city has done that in the past with, say, other police departments for purchase of vehicles, but they were talking more contractual in the context of being able to like have a paving schedule and, you know, some of the infrastructure projects. So, I thought that was creative, and very much appreciated their time and energy they put into having me down there. I want to say thank you to Salinas Women's Club. They had me as their guest speaker for their luncheon this past week, and gave them an update on all the things going on in, in the city, and they are incredibly well-educated and had great questions, and there was an hour-long Q and A afterwards. great questions. And there was an hour-long Q and A afterwards. So, just want to say thank you to the ladies that had me there. I do also just want to acknowledge, on Saturday, we had our closed session, but I want to thank the public that came to voice their opinion about the selection of our city manager. And I was sort of brainstorming, not, I'm hoping that we don't have to do this anytime soon, but I do know that there was quite a bit of feedback on making sure that the public was engaged. And while we did a survey, I thought maybe in the future, having a listening session for the public might make better sense in the, in the opportunity of having more people be engaged. That way, we're not cramming public comment in before a long closed session meeting. Obviously, public comment is part of it, but I think that would have probably helped to have had that as well. Those are all my comments. Very much appreciate the time and energy staff put into the council meeting today. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.